Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, folks that are here, folks at home. We will have the Board of Supervisors meeting dated Thursday, April 4th, 2024. At this time, I'd like to announce that we did have executive session where we discussed land development and anything else, Mr. Solicitor.
Was real estate and litigation.
Real estate and litigation.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. Announcements. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we stand for a moment of silence for all of our soldiers overseas and at home and for all the folks that are involved in wars. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time announcements, Janice, would you like to start?
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. This is so exciting to see so many young people in the audience. I'm glad that the rain has finally stopped so we could kind of get a break from the April showers, but we're looking forward to the May flowers. Thanks for coming.
Yes, nice to have all the police officers here and congratulate the two that are getting sworn in tonight. Hopefully you guys do a great job. We welcome you. Thank you.
I hope all of you are having a good time. Stay in moisturized in this weather. But I wanted to let you know that a little bit about the library. The renovations, including new bathrooms and new study rooms at the library are completed, so come and see them. The five-year strategic plan is near completion and it'll be presented at next month's meeting, I'm told. And on the evening of Tuesday, June 4th, they're going to have a "Love Your Library" reception to introduce the new strategic plan to the public and have a ribbon-cutting program for the renovated spaces. So pencil in the date and everybody's invited. We'll have live music and light refreshments. And this spring, the library's going to have new landscaping and new benches and tables on our front lawn and a butterfly garden, courtesy of the Friends of the Free Library. The AARP tax filing program ended today, so that's not available anymore. And they hosted over 450 appointments in February and March, so it's really a good program. People used it. And that's it. We have a very full schedule for summer. We hope you all join in. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, everybody. Hope everyone had a great Easter and welcome to our new police officers soon to be sworn in. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some announcements for the Parks and Rec Department. The annual Wine and Cheese Designer Bag Bingo fundraising event will be held tomorrow, Friday, April 5th, at the Ben Wilson Senior Activities Center. There'll be, there's still a couple spots remaining, so you can register at warminstorpa.myrec.com. Spring Community Yard Sale is scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, from 8:00 to 1:00 at Warmminster Community Park. The 29th Annual Rubber Ducky Regatta is scheduled for Sunday, May 19th, at Kemper Park. Festivities begin at noon with duck race kickoff at 1:00. Contact the Parks and Rec to sponsor your ducks for a chance to win cash prizes. And by the way, Pat Boyle and myself do have rubber ducky tickets for, there's a couple of us here. Thank you. Work has started on the Halliwell Pavilion Playground at Warmminster Community Park. The playground area will remain closed until work is complete. Safety Town remains open and is accessible through the service gate. So there's lots of work going on at the parks. I hope that everybody enjoys it down the road. It's going to be absolutely beautiful, even more beautiful than it is now. And that's all I've got for announcements. Presentations. We have the recognition of the youth sports volunteer, Adrian Hunt. Janice, would you like to read it?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Whereas we, the Board of Supervisors of Warmminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize Adrian Hunt of Warmminster Township for the Volunteer Service Bon Peur Youth Service Award. And whereas Adrian Hunt, an over 20-year resident of Warmminster, has shown exceptional dedication and unwavering commitment to the children and youth of Warmminster. She has been nominated by several individuals who have witnessed her outstanding leadership for the Warmminster Pioneers Football and Cheerleading Program, as well as the Warmminster Spartans Wrestling. Whereas through Adrian's ability to instill the sense of confidence, resilience, and community spirit in our younger generation, she is truly commendable. Her selfless dedication, leadership, and passion and well-being for our township's young people is worth recognition. And whereas Adrian Hunt shows qualities that inspire others and encourage them to join her in making a positive impact on our community. She shows genuine care and concern for each individual, which makes her a great advocate and role model for the youth in our community as well. Now therefore, be it resolved, on this fourth day of April 2024, we, the Warmminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warmminster community, do hereby recognize Adrian Hunt as a recipient of the Volunteer Youth Services Award, and we are honored to have you make a vital part of Warmminster's Volunteers, which makes our youth sports programs so successful. Thank you. Adrian, stand.
All right. Chief, would you like to take care of that? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, it's my pleasure to present two officers for swearing in to their oath and hope that they have a long and prosperous career. We'll have the Honorable Chris O'Neill swear them in. Ready, Your Honor?
Ready.
All right. First, we'll have John Christopher Ogmore. John was born and raised in Quakertown. He's a graduate of Quakertown High School in 2019. Yeah, they're getting you on. He graduated college with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Shippensburg University in 2023. Him and Anthony, who will be the second swearing in tonight, both attended Temple University Police Academy, where we sponsored them halfway through the academy and picked them up a couple months ago, around February, and sponsored them the last couple months in their academy. They graduated last Friday with their class. So they started Monday with us, and they'll get sworn in tonight, and they'll continue their career going forward. So with that, I'd like to bring, and they're both come from law enforcement families. Christopher's, or John's a second generation, so is Anthony, so we'll bring them on. But we would like to bring John up with his mother and the Honorable Chris O'Neill.
I, John Christopher Ogmore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
Will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmminster Township, Bucks County.
In Warmminster Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear.
I also solemnly swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Now, after your other officers sworn in, let me take your pictures. Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Best of luck. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Anthony Beamonte, the fourth. Anthony grew up in Northampton Township, and he's a graduate of Council Rock South, 2018. He graduated college with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Delaware Valley University in 2022. Again, he attempted, attended Temple University Police Academy and graduated with John last Friday. So I'd like to bring Anthony up with his father, Anthony, and we'll get him sworn in. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
And I will discharge the duties of patrol officer.
In Warmminster Township, Bucks County.
In Warmminster Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also solemnly swear that I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I also solemnly swear that I will obey, uphold, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consider to a person's race.
Without consider to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a short break for the families of the police officers and for Adrian's family to take some pictures. All right, now our meeting will reconvene. We will discuss land matters. First is to consider amendment to responsible contractor's ordinance. And who would like, would you like to speak about that?
Your Honor, or Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment to the responsible contractor ordinance.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Can we read the changes?
Who was the second?
I did.
Okay. Just so I have my notes. Sure, yeah. So there's three changes here. The first one was, if you recall, there was some discussion in the past about how we would determine the amounts, and it's sort of not worked out well. So we're just going with the flat amount of 175 as the threshold. That's what we had set it at in the last amendments back in 2022. We talked about changing it. It just wasn't working out from a technical standpoint. The second one was, there was an edit with regards to adding certain additional fabrication and labor and materials work positions, as well to make sure those are also covered because they might be getting non-people on site doing work. We want to make sure that people still working for them are all covered as well and going through the apprenticeship program. And the last one was more of a housekeeping, not technical, but an administrative one with regards to the timeline and publishing and contracting. Once the award is done and everything's like that, that's just more stuff for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Scott.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have. 1170 Newtown Road Minor Subdivision, R1 Zoning District Residential. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. 114 to 120 Evergreen Avenue is the final land development approval for apartment dwelling units and commercial mixed use. May I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
May I have any, oh, sorry, may I have?
The turn. Madam Chair, I think the applicants here are actually tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, Erica Miller. I'm filling in for Kelly McGowan, who is probably a more familiar face. Yeah, I have the owner and our engineer with us if you guys have anything to discuss, but plans haven't changed, and there was a slight amendment that we discussed with Craig that we can confirm up after this meeting, but we're happy to have final approval tonight.
You have, you have a resolution in your packet. The one item that Scott and I discussed with the applicant, item 12, just for clarification, it was discussed at planning commission. I think there was some misunderstanding there, but they're doing some improvements off-site for storm sewer. That is in your packet where they're required to do a half width of the road mill and overlay where they're proposing storm sewer. They will be required to do a full width of the road mill and overlay just along their property frontage where their utilities are proposed. So Scott will make that amendment and get it over to their office, but everything else is in order, and I would recommend that you approve this resolution tonight with that change to item number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Kennard.
For clarity, I think we're talking about 11 on mine. Is that?
I have 12.
Do I?
Am I at the wrong number?
No, you have the right number. It's 12.
It's number 12.
12. That's what I had.
And I understand you're going to do some improvements to the storm order as well?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the one we're discussing.
Yes. You might have an order of revision.
That could be true. We're talking about the half width.
Yeah, we're talking about that one. Yeah, yes. So item 12. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I would.
Well, any questions from the public? All in favor?
I did want to make a comment. I'm happy to see that it's being accepted and that you will be able to begin the process. I'm just a little disappointed that we weren't able to put housing there instead of having it be commercials, was it, dwell residential. I know you tried. I know you tried. But.
That's still an option.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so it's.
Soundbite is already decided, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, next is the consent agenda.
Your Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move the public comment for tonight and for the future to write after land use matters.
Okay. May I have?
Second.
A motion? Are you, are you using a motion?
Motion, I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. I think that's a good idea. We'll have more continuity with the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. All right.
So this time, it's public comment.
It's public comment time.
Yep.
Yep. Public comment.
Hi, I'm Austin Ryan, 943 Bercher Oak. So I'm actually happy that you guys voted in favor of that last development. I think it's a good first step in kind of creating a downtown in Warmminster and embracing mixed use, both from a financial perspective and from a livability perspective. People want to be in nice walkable areas, and I think that's a good area to start, especially because there's a lot of local businesses along that strip of York Road. I've also, I love diagrams and stuff, so I put this together. If you could pass it down. The picture I got there is, everything in purple is either, it's non-building space, so it's either parking lots or just empty space and park space, which isn't actually, it's essentially going to waste and not generating revenue for the township. And considering, we don't really have that much commercial space zoned in Warmminster. You know, you got to get the most out of it that you can. Yeah, that's it. And, you know, letting businesses build what they need to build, what they see fit, lowers the cost of entry and lets local businesses open up. So thanks, that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. John, go on up.
Go on, Johnny. Wouldn't be the same without you.
John Preo was six up before Joseph Avenue. Couple people asked me about the fire, the bill for the fire inspections, which, you know, of course, I was behind on as well. But one of the questions that they asked more than once was, is the property owner responsible for that or is the tenant? Because there's, like, the, these, the leases were probably, some of them, I'm assuming, were done before we were charging for it like that, and their concern was that they felt that maybe the owner of the property would be responsible for the fire inspection and the tenant would be, you know, there's multiple ways to do it. The owner could do it, charge the tenant, put it in as lease, he has to pay for it. But I don't believe that there's anything that really stipulates who's actually supposed to pay that, whether it's the owner of the real estate or the tenant, which would be the renter. So I don't know if you guys can look into that and see what, it might be a good idea to, you know, maybe put some clarity into that so people aren't questioning it, you know? Okay? And I believe, you know, of course, we need the money, but it's not about the money, it's about safety.
It's about public safety, that's right.
So that's all I'm saying. Okay?
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Come on down, Pat.
Hi, Pat Boyle, Centennial Station. I want to congratulate the two police officers who were sworn in tonight, and a couple people asked me today when they read the agenda, how many police officers does that make us have now?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. That's wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's full staff, right?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you, Jane. Hi, Bob.
Hello, everybody. Bob Wells, Halliwell Avenue. I agree. It's great to get new police officers here. A little young, but I'll take it.
We'll have to start somewhere, Bob.
I hear you. I'm here because a lot of yous know me, some may not, but I'm a contractor and family, from family to family. And I was always raised that you never put good on bad, ever. And the reason I'm saying that, because I know I was up here before, we had a letter stating the fact that they're going to be paving our streets in April, and I really would like somebody to take a peek at our streets. We really have a water problem. I know there's a lot of water problems in Warmminster, but we have, as I stated before, we have no curbs, we have no sidewalks, we have no stormwater drains, we have nothing. And the water just rolls down our streets and into our properties. We believe that the blacktop over the years that has been put on there is just so high that the water can't go down into the fields the way it's supposed to go. So we're just asking, don't put good on bad. Have somebody please check it out. If the road has to be milled twice or three times, then it has to be lower than the properties, so be it. But I'm just asking, please, have somebody take a peek at it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Come on down. Come on, Mike.
Why not? I don't know. MikeFire948 Cornell. Actually, I, something happened to me recently, and I just thought it was kind of strange. I thought I'd bring it up to your attention. Talking about Lock College Road, which I know a couple of you actually live over my neck of the woods. Lock College goes from Sinkler to Bristol. It's a little bit more than a mile. There's, I believe, there's 12 streets that intersect with it, okay? Eleven of them have a stop sign. One doesn't, which is really weird. And I found this out because a while back, I came up to the stop sign. I was on Lock College. There was a car on that street. They're coming down, they're about 50 feet up. Figured out they'll stop at their stop sign, I'm ready to go. I started to go, they honked their horn, I hit my brakes, they just whipped right around the corner. Then it dawned on me, they don't have a stop sign, which, it's crazy that, like, you'd have a main street like Lock College, 11 of the 12 have a stop sign. Nassau's the one that doesn't. And there's only two stop signs on Lock College, one at, I believe, Worthington and one at Nassau. And the Nassau one doesn't have a stop sign coming onto Lock College. And most places you go to, you get a main street like that, all the streets are going to have stop signs. I mean, it, technically, it's not a dead end because you go across there, and that's like the WMA, I don't know, they got a pumping station or something back there. But there's not a stop sign either way, but I know there was guys, they come out, they're in trucks, they always stop and look, but I just thought it was something maybe we could look into.
Thank you.
And then also, before I go, I'll just repeat the Designer Bag Bingo tomorrow night. And we have ducks, if anybody wants.
Oh, wait, are you playing two for one?
I'm, I'm.
I thought you might be giving it to you.
Angela's playing it up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll go over the consent agenda. Consider approval of Board of Supervisors' minutes dated March 7th, 2024. We have, consider the DCED funding contract for body-worn cameras, Police Department, which is $250,000. Consider DCED funding contract for the Warmminster Municipal Authority Basin Projects. Consider approval of asset management software from open government for $33,005 for the installation of training purchase plus annual subscription fees. Also, consider Werner Park lighting improvements. Next, consider 700 York Road Tesla, the release, the final escrow account in the amount of $85,120. May I have a motion?
Motion two.
Second? Second, Janice?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to say it's, you know, on behalf of the chief and the Board of Supervisors, these police cameras are sorely needed, and I'm thrilled. And chief, where did that money come from?
Brian Monroe.
Brian Monroe.
All right.
Our state rep, Brian Monroe, was able to procure $250,000 for us because our police cameras, the body cameras, are antiquated and basically have reached their end of life. And thank you to Representative Monroe. And also, while we're on the subject, Representative Monroe and our Senator Frank Farrey were able to procure $912,000 for the retrofit of two stormwater basins that are another sorely needed project in Warmminster. Both of those basins, we're going to turn from a 25-year storm, which basically holds back no water, Bob, and they're, they outfall towards you. So these are going to help that situation tremendously, and we're going to turn them into, we're going to try to get, make them infiltration basins and where they'll handle 100-year storms, which is a tremendous improvement. And it's costly. All these improved, all this money had come from the state, thanks to Representative Monroe and, you know, for the basin projects, Senator Farrey. So I want to thank both of them and the state for approving it.
I also would like to make, say a thank you to Mr. Ken Hayes because since when he was chair for the past four years prior to me, he went to every. he was chair for the past four years prior to me, he went to every one of our Congress, senators, state reps, didn't matter what party they were, because they want to help the township, and if you don't ask, you're not going to get anything, and I want to thank you because you've procured quite a few funds, and he said he's going to continue to do that, and I say that's a really good idea. And as far as the cameras for the police, it is vitally important, and I want to thank you, thank Representative Monroe, and again, the Mason Projects too, because we all know that we have a lot of water issues in Warminster, and anything that we can do to improve is vitally needed. So may I, so do I have for a motion, please?
There was.
And we already did? Okay, all right. Any, any questions from the Board of Supervisors?
I just want to add a comment. The Warminster Rotary, as well as the EAC, will be participating in the basins, and they're getting grants as well for plantings in those basins.
Oh, that's a good, that's really good. Anything that can improve, prove the situation is great.
Yep.
Any questions from the public?
Oh, he's in the neighborhood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0.
And Madam Chair, I'm still in conversation with our Congressman, Brian Fitzpatrick, and our Senators down in Washington, along with Harrisburg. We're looking for more funding for additional projects to make Warminster a better place to live.
Well, it's already become a better place to live, and I think all of those, all the improvements that we're doing is proof positive of exactly what we're doing, and I thank you for approaching all of our elected officials because it is important that we get money to help us out with these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our finance report, I'll turn that over to Mr. Chuck Haybuck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill list dated March 21, 2024 in the amount of $1,255,622.24, and supplemental bill list dated March 28, 2024 in the amount of $792,744.18 for a grand total of $2,048,366.42.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All right, we have no unfinished business, no new business. What?
Skip to Amy. You skip the guy that makes this council run.
He's standing there, he's like begging, like Cathy, look at me, look at me. All right, John.
I promise I'll be quick because we're only going through the end of February, so we're only two months in.
I apologize.
This is probably the first time in four years I could say revenues lower than it was at this point last year. It's down about a little over $71,000, not a big deal. I do think it's all timing, especially looking at the earned income tax, it's down $83,000. So through February, you got to figure everyone's filing their taxes in March, April. On a consistent basis, our earned income tax does go up 5% to 7% every year, so that's one of the big things that went down through the end of February, not a big deal. Expenses are up compared to last year. It sounds a lot, it's $435,000. It's a 22% increase, but it is what we budgeted for. That's the most important thing. So through, in the February, we're 15% of budget. Two twelfths of the budget would be 16.67%, so we're still trending underneath an even budget throughout the year. Last year, we were at 13%, so we're a little bit higher than that, but still under the target amount of the two twelfths.
So we're tracking on budgets, what you're saying, John, right?
Yeah.
We're tracking good.
I'll tell you, great job.
And, and again, just for everyone's edification, it's just a timing issue as far as those revenue shortages.
Absolutely.
Correct.
When I looked line item by line item, I think it's just, it'll work itself out within the next, like, month or so, once all the final tax returns get filed.
Great.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, very much. Okay. I would have missed the best part. Okay, so, no unfinished business, no new business, professionals report. Let's start with Mr. Tom Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. In addition to our new employees in the Police Department, I'm happy to announce that we're also making offers of employment to two permanent positions in the Public Works Department. I say Public Works, and I'm including Parks and Rec in that. Two new laborers, and we hope that, we think we've got, we think we've got two good candidates, and we hope they will accept the offers. We also have two temporary employees who are going to be working through the end of the summer with the same Public Works Park and Rec unit. So, and job one's going to be cutting grass all over the place for everybody. So we did lose, I think, we'd mentioned this before, Paul Lizzie, who moved on to Northampton Township, and when he consents to it, we will have him back here to give him an award because he was a very longtime employee here and did a great job for many, many years. And we are also, and Chief Donley was being modest, he didn't mention that, he's also very close to getting another non-police officer employee in his department to fill a vacancy that's been around for about a year and a half, if not longer. So I'm happy to make those announcements, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Scott Holbert, you're up.
The items I had to discuss were litigation items, we talked in executive session. Looking through my report, there's really nothing else to discuss, so I have nothing more at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Craig Kennard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have our April Engineers Report. I have no other additions or changes that we haven't already discussed tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tom Scott, upcoming agenda items.
I would request, I think we've covered everything we need to cover for the month of April, and ask the board to consider not having the second meeting, which is currently scheduled for April the 18th.
I second that.
No objections. Unless you get back from the meeting.
We're just having a meeting in the next month, is that what you said?
Well, this is the April meeting right now.
Right, but May?
I'm going to get to the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, the next meeting, what I would add before, which would be the first Thursday in May, which, without looking at my calendar, I've known this because I looked at the wrong spot earlier, May 2nd, is that right?
Yes.
Wow, about that. Thank you very much.
I'm good with that. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right. Okay.
Supervisors comments.
All right, supervisors comments. Janice, you're up.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our Water Authority. They've been working in the Speedway area. They're going street by street, and they're putting liners in the water mains, so you'll see smoke coming out of the truck, but what that's doing is it's adhering to the existing pipes that we have, so rather than digging up roads to do replacements of the pipes, they're putting like a liner in it. So in case you go by and you see all this steam coming out of the truck, don't panic, but it's going to make Speedway much nicer. So they're going to be getting through all the different neighborhoods that have stormwater and sewer issues, and they're going to be preparing things, so I just want to thank them for their hard work in getting that done. And then we'll pave Speedway. We're going to fix underground first, and then we'll take care of the top. Yay!
Chuck?
Once again, I'd like to congratulate the two officers that were sworn in today, Chris and Anthony, and also like to congratulate Adrian on her award for proclamation, and just now that the weather is clear, hopefully spring days are coming and we get out and enjoy the weather.
I agree with that, yeah. I wanted to thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight, and I am so happy that we have a full police force now. I want to remind people that May 15, I think it is, is Peace Officers Memorial Day, right? And April 28, being celebrated on the 26th, is Workers Memorial Day. And for those of you who haven't heard of that, that's a project, this is the 36th Workers' Memorial Day that's sponsored by the Philadelphia Project for Occupational Safety and Health. They have a Memorial Day breakfast and a march to the Delaware River, and they name all the people that have been killed on the job in the Delaware Valley for the last year. More people get killed on the job in this country every year than were killed during the whole Vietnam War. So people don't realize that working can be dangerous if you don't have safety initiatives like our safety initiative here, and public employee OSHA is another one that we need. But if anyone's interested in attending that service, call Phillip OSHA at 215-386-7000. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. I just want to clarify Janice's comments. They're lining the sanitary sewers, but we also have a $4 million water main project that's going to commence in the near future in the Speedway before we pave as well. We're going to replace all the water mains, all your service, you know, what feeds your fresh water to your house, along with the lining and a lot of stormwater work. So definitely Speedway's going to have some major infrastructure improvements, and we're looking forward to that, and hats off to the Municipal Authority for that. Other than that, tacking on to Chuck's comment, the warmer weather's coming, the sun's going to come out next week, longer days, children are going to be out playing, and please drive safely and watch what you're doing, don't look at your phone. And a lot of those workers that die are people that are working in the highways. So keep your eyes on the road and not on your phone. Other than that, enjoy the nice wet weather.
Thank you, Ken. I'd like to say what a great productive meeting we had tonight, and also all the folks that were here to participate, and it's especially nice to swear in to new officers. We are at full staff, that's always great for the safety of our residents, and enjoy, the nice weather's coming, folks, it's coming anytime now, so enjoy it and have a good evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.